We have bills in amount of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents. If there's no other ten people at the board, a motion for those is presented.
I'll make a motion.
On second, on favor?
Aye.
So carried. And we had receipts in amount of sixty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Could a motion for those is presented?
I'll make a motion.
On second, on favor?
Aye.
So carried. Okay, first on the agenda is the Zakowski Lot Consolidation.
Ask me. I'm a contractor from the county for Zakowski's. These are the maps, do you want to see the maps?
Yes, I'll look over them.
So the planning commission asked for some revisions from Jerry Flood's map. I'd like to list two changes. They want to see the owners on each lot. So they, the lots, actually, we just started at the beginning. The lots are this triangle here, and then the three lots, uh, going this way. So the, the owners of the lots were all listed on the right-hand side of the map here with the acreage on there. Those were two of the conditions they wanted. The setbacks for the disencabined are added on there now. And then the well and location for the septic will be listed as well. The well is, uh, in the corner of the cabin off the left-hand side of the map from the direction. And the septic is, uh, noting lot number one, the tank is there. So those are changes that the planning commission wanted for the map. They're combining lot twenty-three, twenty-four, and then one, two, three along the side here is the one lot. Um, in talking with the, well, the letter from the Pike County Planning Commission asked for a few changes as well. Uh, they wanted the parcel, I think that's on the deeds. This is one of the copies of the deeds here. The parcel numbers aren't correctly listed if I throw on one. Parceling was on the deed there.
Do you want to couple it together?
Exactly.
Did you have a turn to review the deed?
Is that what you signed over?
I just got it, that's right.
Well, I said to you previously, Rachel, the one thing we wanted to talk, you wanted to add on to there was the restriction for the, um, one, uh, single-family residence on there. I had your letter here.
Okay, alright.
And that was me at the end of the deed.
Okay, so, just, this has been hanging around.
Yeah.
So, we're talking from this line up to the twenty-foot right away, correct? That's what goes, so, it, it doesn't have any impact on First Tappan Road, et cetera, right? It's everything from there north or northward?
Yeah, it's all on that, on that kind of corner here, coming down to the point of right, right, right away.
If you recall, if you re, now, I think one thing you want to do is change the date of the deed. Because, uh, you won't get the approval until now.
Okay. I got to find new ones.
Okay. So it seemed to me as though this started, if you recall, as a potential lot improvement. There was some suggestion or concern about Paper Street that came through here. I think that's been rectified by Flood. So I think, that having been said, I think that all we need to do is, uh, review and approve the deed. So, this is, that, it manifested itself from the standard lot improvement to this subdivision that required submission to the planning commission's laws, uh, by kind of planning commission. So now it's been back, you satisfied the conditions, or the concerns, or the comments from both of you, those units, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what they asked, yeah.
Okay, I think, I think it's, it's appro, it's appropriate, uh, for approval.
If they don't make a motion to approve it, subject to, uh, solicitor's review.
I'll second the motion.
On favor?
Yeah, we, we actually had right one. Yeah, that's actually only be the half, I mean, it's going on so long, but, like, a half time, it's not.
I think you probably should, because, I'll get the approval from now.
Okay. Okay, let's, that's what the master thought about that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, am I holding the map somewhere?
I'm just hanging on to him, I'll, I'll call you in the next day or two.
And let me know when I'm all ready.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to sign that one, or do you need to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, this time we'll take Lake Region Development Minor Subdivision.
And the, the main things that were left from the last time I was here was the location of the parking. It was originally shown along the gravel drive, kind of where they are parking right now. Um, we shifted that into the existing gravel here, that's, there's gonna need to be a little bit of, uh, extra excavation there, or, you know, a little bit of fill-in it in. But we have six spots off the side of, um, the one condo unit building. And then, the, the other thing that had come up was, um, discussion about the setbacks, um, right here for this building. Um, and after we did a little more digging, the ordinance, the, um, the establishment of the ten-foot from the PPL line, um, then follows through, is if there is a narrow strip, the ten-foot setback is still measured from the PPL Corporation project line. It doesn't actually change with this five feet going in there. Still ten feet to here. This building is actually eleven. Um, but yeah, it, even if it was, even if it was less, it would still be, it wouldn't actually change what the requirement was. Um, and if it was less, it would be an existing, not a requirement.
So currently the requirement is eleven feet.
Eleven feet to the outs, e, exterior one.
To the project line?
To the project line, yep. And as, as the ordinance, as it, with, with the establishment of the strip, the, 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 I don't know if it's actually a setback, but that's not the way it's actually listed in here. But it says no part of any structure may locate closer than ten feet to the project line. And then, it doesn't, that part doesn't change, it's still to the project line, to the strip.
So you're saying regardless of the five-foot strip, it's still measured ten feet off the project line?
Yeah, well, yeah, that, 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 I believe that.
What's that section you're referring to?
It's, uh...
Help me, please. And did you have that in here someplace on your map as a note?
Um, I, I, we added it up here to the setbacks, um, as per, it's, it's seven, four, three, the ten-foot setback from the project line is still the requirement.
Okay. The issues were setback last time at party. Okay, so, and you have six spots here.
Six spots, yep.
It seems to me like they satisfied the, uh, situations. The only thing I would say is, I didn't read that specifically. They grabbed me when I first walked in. It seems to me as though that's correct, it's ten foot off the project line, but if you want, you can approve it, and I'll take another look at it.
Rich, it's right in the ordinance.
I hear it.
He's citing you right from the...
I understand that.
I did the same thing, I checked.
I'm not saying that.
Because I know that was a concern, so I wanted to make sure, and, uh, he's right.
We can make a motion subject to its review.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just letting you know, it's there, I mean, that's our basis, okay? And the parking meets your requirements too, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, I remember you said last, and I said we'd have it fixed for you when you got there.
Okay, do you have a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve subject to attorney Henry's review.
I'll second the motion, on my favor, second five, say aye?
Aye.
So carried.
If I may, as a footnote, I have been provided, uh, a consolidation deed by Lake Region Development, three to itself, and also with an agreement. This, uh, deals with the urgent care facility. I told attorney Farley, and, uh, Mr. Jacobs said I will review this and ask it to be put on the agenda for the next meeting, okay?
That was the one question I had, is, I, I know I was here at the end of September, the second meeting in September. And I couldn't remember if that was approved conditions at that point, or not.
I think that this was, these are the...
They were the conditions, so you need to come back, I guess that's my main question.
I would, I would say no.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
These are conditions attached to the conditional approval, conditional use.
The land development approval, not conditional use.
I stand corrected?
Yep.
Okay, so, review it.
It's just given to you guys to review, and then we'll go.
I will let you know then, within the next two weeks.
Rich, on your favor, I drafted that agreement about the, the strip. We're gonna give it to the other property owner, make sure he's...
Okay, well, just, it's not on the agenda today, so if I have a problem...
We'll just take a look at it, it's only, it's only mentioned, because it's the same project, that's it.
You got a copy of the ENS approval, correct? For, for, not for us, for the, for the, the...
I don't have it.
You probably don't have it out here, but I think, if, if not, it's your house.
But if not, I'll make sure I can ask you.
Yeah, let me know.
That came from them.
We can put it on the...
I don't think I saw it, but, but I'll check.
I'll copy one of them. That was one of the, that was one of the other...
Rich.
But I just came back to you.
Rich. Rich, um, Justin's telling me we got all the permits in and everything. We'd like to start on date. Do you think you'll let me know by, before Monday?
I'll try, if it's not on the agenda for today, but if that's one of the conditions, it was up to me to review it. Now that I have it, I'll try to get that, okay?
Yeah, as always, that agreement, if you would, okay?
Alright, thanks, hon.
Thanks, Ben.
How you doing today?
Good.
Good.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is JLM Real Estate Investments, half the deed markets conditional use. Just read a short here of how this process played out. Um, first, JLM Real Estate Investments LLC submitted a zoning application to the zoning officer. And the zoning officer's comments, "Your application meets the requirements outlined in the modified township zoning ordinance that we made, including setbacks and previous coverage and partner requirements." It was then sent, the application was sent to the township engineer for review. The township engineer comments, "This property is located in the community commercial zone. Proposed use is site, as onsite while septic. They recommend approval of a conditional use, noting developer will need to obtain all permits listed in the commercial use narrative, including Palmyra Township land development requirements." Was then sent to the Palmyra Township Planning Commission, September tenth. Planning Commission suggests a new building facade to be compatible with Palmyra Township neighborhood. Planning Commission recommended an approval with the following conditions. PennDOT Highway occupancy permit, sewage disposal approval, public conditional use hearing, and the motion was passed unanimously. Then came back to the board for a conditional use hearing on October first at Fort BM, which included five hours of testimony and public comment. Based on the input from the zoning officer, the engineer, the planning commission, comments from the public, the board comments, and the township solicitors, the following conditions will be imposed pending conditional use approval. This time I'll ask the solicitor to read in the conditions.
I have been provided the list of conditions from the board in regard to this matter, and I'll educate them one at a time. Number one, full and complete compliance with any and all recommendations of the township engineer. Number two, submission and approval of an onsite sewage disposal plan and full and complete compliance with any and all recommendations of the township engineer, the township SEO, and DEP. This shall include any and all required replacement fields. Number three, full and complete submission and approval of the subdivision plan. Number four, full and complete submission and approval of a land development plan, including plans for access roads, public parking, and utilities. Number five, submission and approval of a pump test to ensure sufficient water supply approved by the township engineer. Number six, limitation of lot clearing slash timber cutting to an area shown on the map submitted by the applicant to be approved by the township engineer. Number seven, approval of any and all necessary emergency ingress and egress in and slash or from the subject premises. Number eight, a parking plan submitted and approved by the township evidencing sufficient parking in accord with township ordinances for all uses within the subject premises. Number nine, a traffic study to be reviewed and approved by the township engineer. Number ten, receipt of a PennDOT Highway occupancy permit consistent with the, a four-site traffic study and engineer approval. Number eleven, submission of and approval of township engineer or by the township engineer of a lighting plan consistent with any and all township requirements. Number twelve, submission and approval of any and all permits required by the township engineer. Number thirteen, submission and approval of a stormwater plan together with any and all necessary easements. Number fourteen, submission and approval of a solid waste disposal plan, including on-premises protection and security of same. Number fifteen, submission of an approval, I'm sorry, submission and approval of a signage plan. Number sixteen, submission and approval of an architectural plan for the facade of the store, con, being, consistent with surrounding building designs. Number seventeen, limitation of business hours from eight AM to ten PM. Number eighteen, submission and approval of a vegetative screening plan shielding private property on north and south boundaries of the subject property. Number nineteen, limitation of tractor-trailer deliveries to store closure hours. Number twenty, submission and approval of a fence plan relative to any necessary detention basin. Number twenty-one, no issuance of any permits unless or until all the foregoing conditions have been approved and satisfied. Number twenty-two, this subject approval shall expire one year from the approval date in the event that applicant has failed to take any substantial steps to consummate its announced plans.
Okay, here are those conditions, we have a motion on that.
Make a motion subject to attorney Henry's review of the, uh, book-based conditions.
Oh, it's not so much my review, we just, it, they're, they're, these were your proposed conditions, so.
I have a motion based on the conditions presented, on my favor?
Aye.
On those, so carried. At, at this time, it's gonna go to, uh, land development phase, but all those conditions will have to be addressed in that before they can back to the town. This was just hearing to see that, or use, to see that the use was consistent with the, so, which is...
You also need a secondary motion too, but because this is a contested matter, uh, we have to issue a reasoned opinion and decision. So, uh, I would ask that you, but, have a motion directing me to prepare one and submit it to the township for the board's approval and execution at the next meeting.
Do you need that motion? I'll second the motion, on my favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then attorney Henry, thirty days to appeal from this setback, this, uh, receipt.
That would be my general...
And then my client keeps, is asking, and I, we've noticed that one supervisor...
He's recused himself.
I don't think he was ever on the record, Rich.
Oh, okay.
So I think it needs to be placed on the record at this point.
There was a, there was a recusal of a physical email, so we will attach that as part of the record.
Okay, and my next question is, with all due respect, there was no stenographer at the last year.
It's been recorded, and it'll be transcribed if necessary.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you all very much.
Well, there's gonna then be public comment, right? I mean, at the end of your meeting, right?
Yeah, at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, administrative support?
Hi, I think I heard it, I'm sorry.
Henry? Just very quickly, I sent down something on, uh, Malwa, but it was in the wrong township, and it wasn't our fault, it, it came from somebody that was considering a transfer of a liquor license. In regard to Wolf, that's been back and forth a couple different times. I did do a letter up to attorney Magnata, I think it was today or yesterday, simply saying, "We need the easements and things like that before meeting, doesn't make any sense to meet." So these were, that's a lot consolidation, but also a community sewer system. So having said that, that's all I have to report at this time.
This time we'll take public comment. Anybody linking up a comment?
I just want to reiterate that Bonnie Cave of Rotella, I own, uh, twenty-three acres next to where Dollar General would like to put their, uh, business. I am against it, there will be damage to my property, to the wetlands. I believe it will endanger the watershed of Lake Wall and Paul Pack. You can see from the community support we had last time, and the petition we have that has over two hundred signatures from local residents and citizens from our area, that this does not fit our community, and I think it would be...
If I may, it fits the zoning ordinance, which is what this hearing was for. It's up to them now to prove that they won't be damaged where the stormwater will go, and how it will appear. That's the land development phase, that'll be coming in next.
And that will be with the DEP with the wetlands on my property, where they said they were gonna drain their water.
They have to show where the water's gonna be drained, and that's what the DEP will prove that.
Right, 'cause the answer of onto my property is not the answer.
Correct.
And I will not be granting an easement.
We understand, we, we, we went in quite a deliberation about this.
But now the ball's in their court.
We have to abide by the laws of the zoning.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Bublock, and, uh, my question is this, uh, so I'm in Lyndale. I have a couple points, actually. Dollar General's, I think you, you made a comment about it, that it's gonna fit in the neighborhood aesthetically. To me, they're ugly, they're, all these stores are ugly. There's mismanagement, um...
We, we can't make our decisions based on hearsay or...
Alright, so here's, so here's my question. Where is all this? Where can I go online and find out all about this?
About what?
Uh, everything you're talking about, the plans, everything. Or do you have copies that you give the residents?
Well, it's in our zoning ordinance, they have to go through a land development plan, but they have to bring all that information to the township. They have to prove that it's gonna fit in that area.
Okay.
If I may add, the obligation on the applicant for the next step is much more detailed and involved than what had to be presented under the ordinance regarding the use. The use is there now, and it's consistent with the ordinance, but it, land development is a huge factor, and as, uh, as Mr. Mueller just said, stormwater is one of the biggest issues that any developer has to, is faced with.
Uh, just two more things. Um, is this Dollar Tree or Dollar General involved with Blue Ridge Lumber at all? Are they, do they, does the OLC fly under Blue Ridge?
We can't answer that question, we don't know.
Okay, and, uh...
The applicant, the application made by JLM Real Estate Investments LLC, who, who owns that or runs it, I have no idea.
And any tie-in with, uh, I'm hearing there's condominiums supposed to go up behind that?
We haven't, we haven't heard anything to that.
Okay, that's all.
This is only approval of the use for retail establishment there, that's all this is, the use.
And just to clarify, it doesn't matter if it's Dollar General or Aunt Mabel's Jams and Jellies, we're approving a use, it's a retail use for that area. They have to prove that it's, they can make it work now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My name is Father Richard Beck, I'm the pastor of Creed and Peace in Holley. While presently, I am not a resident of Taffin, I will be in about two years, I will be moving in the area where Rotella's live. That's my personal interest. Number two, many of the people in our community here are members of my parish, and also, we're part of this community as well. My concern is for, generally speaking, creation, the environment. I believe this lake is what powers this area. I also believe the people who moved here came here because of that. I look upon this area, probably something that doesn't work legally, but I call it slash suburban country. And the people who live are residents, and I believe that they should in this situation with water and so forth, be given greater attention, not by you or others, but by the fact that this has a great deal to do with our environment and the homes that they've chosen to live in. And I think there's a clash between that and what Dollar General was attempting to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. If I may, that's, that's the reason zoning districts were incorporated, was for that reason, so you don't have junkyards next to residential areas, or strip clubs and, and such like that. That's why each zone is, is apparent, and that's why they have the, meet the requirements, they're gonna fit into that zone.
I just appreciate your, I was looking to stay till last minute.
Thank you, Ben, we appreciate your comments. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, just a quick question, and I apologize if you had already... Oh, Moira Dodson, I was just wondering if there is a Plan B? If for some reason, hopefully, it doesn't go through on Route five oh seven, was there any discussion about an alternate location?
That wouldn't come before us, that's completely up to the development.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Andy Lee from Morris Way. Uh, my question to you folks is, uh, I understand that they're now going to the next step, which is all the, uh, uh, review from the engineers and so forth. Is there gonna be any community or, uh, from the outside input as far as reviewing, let's say, the fence, uh, vegetation plans, uh, stormwater management? Uh, rather than just relying on the engineer?
We rely on the engineers for that, and we aren't experts, we can't say how high a fence should be, or how far the setback should be. That's up to a professional to determine.
Right, so the professional is not, doesn't mean that the professional lives in this neighborhood. The neighborhood people is, should be the one that has a voice to see how the fence is gonna be constructed, what kind of plantation or, uh, vegetation should be. I think that, uh, uh, I would like to see some, uh, input from the public into this review process. Thank you.
So, for Henry, what are we standing on? I don't know if this answers your question, Mr. B, but there were, uh, six intervenors in, in this matter that were entertained by the board two weeks ago. So I would just suggest, attorney Farley represented the Rotella family, it was Hemlock Land Association, Jan Lindner, Cofac Marine Service Corp., Cisco, I, I forgot the first name, but I think the last name was Cisco, and then five oh seven country store. So I would just, I would just ask that, first of all, if there is an appeal taken from this matter, uh, whoever takes the appeal has the absolute obligation, as far as I'm concerned, to notify any of the other intervenors. If there's, if there's no appeal, and this goes automatically or soon to a, the submission of a land development plan, I, all I can say is, you're just gonna have to keep your eyes peeled, because it has to go first to the, um, township, uh, planning commission. And that's when you wanna be able to come in, and you'll be afforded the opportunity to speak for and against the plan at that time. Because that's really, and that's involved with the plan, as the, as the board members have already indicated.
And, and they are put on, the, the township's website, and the announcements of those meetings are on there. We just ask everybody to look for those announcements, and they can, they can kinda look at that and get party to that meeting if they want to.
If, if, if I may, on behalf of the Rotellas, we'll wait for your decision. I understand that you tried to address the concerns by applying to... I understand that you tried to address the concerns by applying to the land development and all its conditions, but it's still my client's position that there were specific requirements before you grant the conditional use. And I suspect my client's position is going to be that, per your ordinance, you did not address those specific requirements first. That's where attorney Henry and I disagree. It's not all just non-specific requirements. It only have to, as the attorneys have, have to be touched upon. Rather, there's certain ones in our position had to be specifically addressed, and she failed to do so in her presentation. And if my client decides to appeal the decision, I assure you that'll be one of the arguments that'll be used for the appeal. I still gonna question how we're gonna get a transcript, but I'll go one step at a time as we proceed for my client's decision, once I get a copy of your opinion and, uh, where we go from there. I would ask if somebody had a copy, can I have a copy of that before you go? Oh, you're gonna get a transcript? No, but can I have a copy of what you read? No, you'll have to wait for the transcript.
Barb took it down, so I'll get you a copy of it.
Okay.
Hi, Paul Rotella. Um, obviously, um, one of the concerns I think people, I like direct to reflect. I can't tell how many people are behind me, but I guess there's about fifty people here objecting, I think, to this, unless anybody's in support of it. But one of the concerns we have is, I think, general site plan, comprehensive site plan, uh, approval. And attorney Henry, do you have a, a process like that, uh, that kind of proceeding here?
Yes, that's the land development plan.
And that would be the site plan, the full site plan with all the detailed...
Plus satisfaction of all of the conditions that have been adopted by the board.
And that would be a public hearing.
It may be a public hearing. It might not require one, but it'll be exposed to the public through the planning commission.
Right.
The township engineer or consultant will, I'm sure, review it at that juncture, and then it'll come back before the board.
Will there be any opportunity for input by the public before it goes back to the board?
Without a doubt.
And that'll be publicly announced.
Planning commission beats the...
The second Tuesday of each month that they have an agenda. If anybody wants to be notified, if there is an agenda on a specific meeting or any time, you can just call the office. It's the second Tuesday of every, every, like, it used to be seven o'clock. It's now four o'clock. But you can give me a call. They're supposed to let me know a week ahead of time if they're going to come into planning. I always give them a little wiggle room to call me a few days ahead, and I'll be happy to let you know if they're coming in.
You put it on the website?
I put an agenda on the website, Tom. It only has to go on twenty-four hours ahead.
I recognize that. I'm just saying it's another way for them to get...
Oh, yeah, you put an agenda on the website.
It's on the website, that's all. Another way to notify.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Your name is Denise Marcos. I'd like to ask you minutes to get to the Dollar General that is by Route A four. And if you look at the plantings that they put there, they've been eaten by deer, and you have now four sticks sticking in front. So I think that a gentleman had mentioned, um, people having some input into what is going on there. Um, the yellow banner going across, I have never seen a Dollar General that does not have that, and it does not fit into that area.
Just for the rest, as they did oppose, they proposed a DG Market, which is a different logo. It's not the same.
Oh, I know, but it's, a Dollar General is a Dollar General. And the buildings in that area are businesses, but they have a very, um, they fit into the 507. It is a county road, but it has a country feel, and I just hope that that is seriously considered.
Okay, thank you.
Bridget Delman. Um, what are the legal implications if you just simply say it's not welcome here?
And move into a lawsuit, because we have no grounds to deny it.
I'm sorry, weren't you provided numerous grounds from attorney Farley at the last meeting as per your own statutes from your book that you read from?
The board spoke, the board, I know for a fact that the board tried to address many of the concerns, if not all the concerns that arose at the meeting, uh, two weeks ago, so, or the hearing two weeks ago. So, with that having been said, and listening to the potential of, of a lawsuit or suit or an appeal, the board's not gonna speak any further about this, okay? Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, opposed meeting. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.